El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelor's, 74 master's, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our creation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. All county offices will be closed on Monday, May 27th, in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, May 28th, 2019. The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048. The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public.
Today is Monday, May 13th, 2019. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation from Gerald Marcus?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning. I know that poverty must cease. I know this through the brokenness and conflict in my heart. I know that protest is my most prophetic act and that the world is longing for a new soul, a new healing moment. I know that when we awaken to our origins and become truly human, we bring hope to the children and to the earth. I feel called today to bring the people together, to break the bread, to tell the story. I feel called today to be a mystic in action, aligned to the dynamics of the universe. I feel called today to give my gift, to listen to the heartbeat of the broken world, to heal the fragmentation of the people and the planet. I feel called today to give my gift, to listen to the heartbeat of the broken world, to heal the fragmentation of people and planet. I feel called today to celebrate the wonder of creation and respond to the sacredness and the challenges of life. I feel called today to participate in the work of my time, to fall in love, to feel at home. I feel called today to be inflamed with enduring hope, to be at one with the universe. I feel called today to compose a new paragraph for life. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to Commissioners' Court. Now it's on. Thank you very much for being here. We'll get started on the consent agenda. Jessica?
Thank you, sir. Item number four is the consent agenda composed of items 4A through 4L. At this time, we're requesting to have item 4L postponed for one week. Item 4L reads, "Accept the quarterly report from the Office of Emergency Management." Are there any other items that the members of the court or the public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners?
Move to approve remaining items.
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon is absent. Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego? Item number 5A, Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution designating the week of May 12th through 18th, 2019, as National Police Week in El Paso County, Texas.
Well, I have the honor of presenting the resolution for Commissioner Leon, and he asked me to share that he was sorry that he couldn't be here today, but you know, I wish that he could have because you know the passion that he has for law enforcement. So I'll do my best to take over for what he would have done. Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the El Paso County Sheriff's Office and all other local, state, federal, and law enforcement agencies in El Paso County. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including 59 members of law enforcement agencies in El Paso County, including El Paso Police Officer Adrian Arayano, whose end of watch was March 18, 2015; El Paso Police Officer David Ortiz, whose end of watch was March 14, 2016; and El Paso County Sheriff Deputy Peter Herrera, whose end of watch was March 24, 2019. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, or recognized on the Texas Peace Officers Memorial in Austin, Texas, and whereas by joint resolution of Congress, signed by President John F. Kennedy on October 1962, and proclaimed by President Barack Obama that May 15, 2016, is designated as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15 falls, and whereas President Donald Trump directs it to flag be flown at half-staff on Peace Officers Memorial Day, Wednesday, May 15, 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of El Paso County, Texas formally designates May 12, 2019, through May 18, 2019, as Police Week in El Paso County, Texas, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Sign this 13th day of May, 2019.
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Perez.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Richard Wiles, El Paso County Sheriff. Thank you very much for presenting that resolution today. You know, we really should think about law enforcement every day, the work they do in helping to make us safe, this community safe, and what they're willing to do to accomplish that mission. National Police Week, though, allows us as a community to come together for this period of time and recognize these fine men and women who work hard every day, who put their life on the line so that we can go about our daily business, and we certainly do appreciate their efforts. It's also a time to allow us to recognize those officers who, in fact, have put their life on the line and lost. And certainly, our most recent one was Deputy Herrera on March 24th of this year. And it just hits home how quick things can turn and how bad things can get and how it affects this community as a whole. And I certainly appreciate all of you for your support for law enforcement in this community, not just these fine deputies, but also the men and women of the El Paso Police Department and other agencies here in our jurisdiction. There's a lot of them, school districts and small cities and railroad police and federal, state law enforcement. We work together and are very successful in ensuring that we keep the community safe, that we keep our citizens safe, that we keep each other safe. I'd like to introduce a couple of people that I think wanted to say a few words. First is Omar Gonzalez, who's the Vice President of the El Paso County Sheriff's Officers Association.
Thank you, Omar.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Deputy Omar Gonzalez, Vice President of the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Association. First of all, thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for the opportunity to be here today, especially Commissioner Leon, for preparing the resolution and taking the time to honor us for National Police Week. The brave man and woman of the Sheriff's Office often receive little or no recognition for their daily due efforts, yet each day they put themselves in harm's way to protect our communities. They work long hours, often in dangerous situations, to protect our lives, liberty, and property while leaving his or her house for work every day, never knowing if today is the day. Law enforcement officers are more than just in uniform. We are human, just like the people in the communities we serve. More than 60,000 law enforcement officers in the United States were assaulted while performing their duties in 2017, and 93 officers were killed in the line of duty, according to the FBI's Law Enforcement Officers Killed and Assaulted Program. We also take this opportunity to pay tribute to law enforcement personnel who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty. We will never forget their courage. As a 16-year veteran with the Sheriff's Office, I feel the best way to honor my fellow partners will be to tell you a story. Every deputy has a story. By that I mean a story that we'll never forget and will carry with them throughout their life due to things they experienced while working in the capacity of a deputy. One story comes up right away will be the passing of our partner and brother Deputy Herrera. March 22nd, 2019 will be a day that we will never forget, working with the Sheriff's Office. I remember that day receiving a phone call that Deputy Herrera was shot multiple times and that he is currently in the hospital in critical condition. I remember it was about 2:00 in the morning when one of my partners called me and said, "Hey, we need to go to the hospital." I immediately got ready, drove to the hospital, and saw Deputy Herrera's family in the ER room, along with my several partners right behind me, friends, family. I was still in shock and disbelief what had happened. Immediately, we all started praying. We started praying for Deputy Herrera. Around 7, 8:00 in the morning, I remember the doctor coming around and saying that he was expected to survive. We all got that good news. We were happy, continued still praying. Then they let us go inside the ICU room. I remember myself, I walked inside, seeing Deputy Herrera laying down. I saw him, grabbed his hand, told him to keep fighting. And we all loved him. We all loved him so much, couldn't believe him, couldn't believe he was there laying down, but we all had hope because the doctor said he was gonna survive. As I'm praying to Deputy Herrera, just looking at him, telling him that we love him and to keep fighting, I knew he was gonna survive. I knew he was gonna fight it. Walked away, a lot of my partners went inside, probably said the same thing, prayed for him, loved him. It's not just a partner, he's a brother to us. That whole weekend was hard for us. We were just going, visiting 24/7. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, Judge, for being there with us too, helping us out, praying for him. March 24th comes around, a lot of us had a part-time. I had a part-time at the Scott Arthur Park that I was already committed two weeks prior to that. As I started showing up to the part-time, I saw a lot of my friends, partners, right behind me, looking at their phone. I see my cellphone and I see a lot of text messages that Deputy Herrera had passed away. I couldn't believe it. None of us could believe it. We were shocked. Being there at that part-time, we still had a commitment to work that part-time. We still had to work. I wanted to leave. I wanted to go hug my partners. I wanted to go hug Herrera's family, my family, but we still had to work that day. A lot of us back here were working that day. It was the worst part-time I've ever worked, especially since there was a concert, hearing that music. But I would see my partners, and you could just see their face, like they're just in disbelief, very disbelief. While working there, my wife showed up. She showed up, called me. I met her. I hugged her. One of those hugs that I couldn't believe. I was just, she just didn't want to let me go. She told me, "I love you." She told me, "Be careful, be careful. Tell your partners, your friends to be careful also." It was just hard. That day was just hard for all of us over here, right behind us. It was just hard, that day was just hard for all of us over here, right behind us, everybody that works in the Sheriff's Office, the community of El Paso. We had so much support and help from everyone in the county of El Paso. That weekend, we all came together as a family. Thank you Judge, Commissioners, for all your help also and all your prayers. So to all the deputies heroes, the ones choosing to put their lives at risk on a daily basis and to protect us and keep us safe, to them, I say thank you. On behalf of the community, I am blessed to call my home. Thank you for acknowledging the incredible services and sacrifices we make each day for the community that we patrol and take care of. Finally, this is National Police Week. We reaffirm our pledge that we will always protect, always defend, because we are the thin blue line. Once again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you Deputy Gonzalez. And then lastly, I have one other speaker, I believe. No? Oh, maybe not. Sorry. So again, on behalf of the men and women of the Sheriff's Office, thank you very much for taking this time to recognize them on this important week, and not only that, to help remember those officers who have given the ultimate sacrifice. And I don't know, I think we've sent out the information regarding the memorial service from the Sheriff's Office. It'll be tomorrow at 10:00 AM at Sheriff's Headquarters. And certainly Judge and Commissioners, you all are invited, as well as any other county employees or citizens of El Paso County that would like to join us as we recognize those county officers who have fallen in the line of duty, and specifically the recognition that we will be doing for Deputy Herrera tomorrow at 10:00. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, thank you very much, very heartfelt, and your courage to keep that story going. I've made every effort everywhere I'm at, you know, and I tell them that, you know, two things that were incredible for me were that camaraderie, that you guys came together. You know, I had a lot of love for law enforcement based on my family, but then it took it to another level of really understanding, a recall that he had died and that officers still had to go out there. And I kept thinking about the families. I mean, what are the families thinking? You know, what are the families going through, knowing that this just happened and then having to see a loved one leave that night? And so that, you know, how courageous that was. But one of the things that you said that really moves me is that the death of Pete Herrera is gonna make each and every one of you stronger, more loyal, more passionate, and sometimes that doesn't happen. Sometimes people die and it destroys us and then they sort of, we, you know, they die in vain, but not in this case, not in this case. I've seen, every time I talk to someone, it's like it happened yesterday and then we have to keep it in our memory. And as you go out, you know, to understand, we have to be extremely safe, but also knowing and hopefully, especially this week, that every one of us here at Commissioners Court, that we could promote that same feeling that Mr. Gonzalez expressed, that more people know about it, that more people understand, because I feel we take it for granted. You know, we go to sleep at 10:00 and think that everything shuts down with us, but we don't realize at that point in time, you're out there making sure that we're safe. And when we talk about, you know, being a safe city, that's, you know, you're so much part of it. I think it's the biggest part of it. I'm a little biased, right, because of being in the county, but I really believe that you offer so many things and so much support to our community that helps us to be the safest city. So I thank you, very heartfelt, still myself trying to move forward with it because it just left, I'm trying to go from the pain of seeing the family and talking to the family to them being like yourselves, to doing something about that, not just feeling the pain and walking away, but actually doing something about it. So I'm committed, and I know I have a great relationship with Sheriff Wiles and, you know, I ask him at any time and with Pete Ferroni, that what is it that I can do to show that I'm committed because of what happened, even more committed, and not just talking about it. So I thank you so much for being here. I do hope that people that are, usually we have more people, and I always love that there's more people when these things happen, but we are on the broadcast and I'm hoping that everyone that's listening to this really understands and, you know, especially this week. I think someone asked that we put a blue light bulb in our porches in recognition of Law Enforcement Week, and also that I hope you get a lot more handshakes thanking you than complaining about what you guys do. So thank you very much for being here today.
Item 5B, approve and adopt a resolution declaring Saturday, May 18, 2019, as National Kids to Parks Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Okay, so I have the honor as well to read the resolution. Whereas May 18, 2019 is National Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, National Recreation and Parks Association, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, and the County of El Paso Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's park, whereas it's important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks, and whereas the Parks and Recreation Department encourages children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity and chronic disease through a variety of special event programs scheduled throughout county parks. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Department urges residents of El Paso to make time, May 18, 2019, to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park, and broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now therefore, be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court do hereby declare Saturday, May 18, 2019, as County of El Paso Parks and Recreation Department and Texas Parks and Wildlife, National Kids to Parks Day. Sign this 13th day of May 2019.
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners, Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation Director. And with me is President of the Escarate Fishing Club, Juan Salas, and our Special Event Coordinator, Tessa Jimenez.
Hi.
To talk about Kids to Parks Day. Again, this is a second annual Kids to Parks Day for the County of El Paso, Texas, in an effort to meet the county's goal of being a vibrant community. We hope to aim to provide entertainment, environmental stewardship, and conservation education, so that children can explore and enjoy the outdoors and improve their quality of life. We have partnered with different agencies to provide activities at West Way Park, Escarate Park, Reisenger Park, to encourage children and their families to visit their local parks and connect with nature, and so that they can create their own adventures. And to talk a little bit more about the programming, I'll have Mr. Salas speak on the fish derby.
Saturday, we're having the Fish Derby, a tournament for the kids. We have four of those events a year, and it's all nonprofit, no gains. We put up everything, okay? We supply the rods, fishing the fish, because it comes from the county, from y'all, thank you, and the bait and everything. We provide also instruction to the kids. We go to schools to provide instruction. Tomorrow, we'll have the White Sands Missile Range Elementary School here at the park for some fishing. We were up there three weeks ago instructing their, they're third, fourth, and fifth graders, and they'll be down here tomorrow, fishing. And later this week, we'll have La Barron School and also Ariel Washington. Every year, we do a lot of instruction.
Well, thank you, Mr. Salas.
Very welcome. Thank you for the support we get from the parks and from y'all.
Well, you know, if you were like myself, born, I was right across Jefferson, and we took that long walk with our dad, with my dad, and went fishing every Saturday and Sunday, and so it brings back a lot of memories. So I'm glad that you're, that's a tremendous tradition, you know, go out fishing with your son or daughter and spending the day at Ascara, and, you know, I had the opportunity to get a tour from Veronica, and amazing things are happening at Ascara, so very proud of, especially the fishing component to it, that sometimes we forget is so important and in part of our culture and understanding of being outdoors and spending time outdoors. So, Mr. Salas, thank you very much for your, all your efforts.
Out in the desert, there's no water, except here.
Yes.
A lot of people don't know about Ascara Lake.
It's our oasis.
You don't let people know.
We don't want to keep it that much of a secret, okay? Thank you, Mr. Salas.
That's a Jimenez, Special Events Coordinator. So some of the other free events that we'll have that day, on top of the Kid Fish Derby, will be a putting contest at Ascara Park. The first team partnered with us on that to put that together for the kids. So it'll be like an obstacle course on the putting green, and the balls and the putters will be provided for the kids. We're gonna do target practice at the sports park. The batting cages will be set up with different items that the kids can hit, baseballs at for target practice. We'll be doing a moon gazing at Reisenger Park, and that's far east El Paso. It is gonna be a full moon that night, so they're gonna go over the different phases of the moon, and we're gonna do some glow-in-the-dark activities with the kids as well. And then on West Way Park, on the west side, we'll do a drone demonstration. They're gonna, the drone hive will come out and help us talk about safety of drones and all the fun stuff that's happening with drones. So we encourage families to come out to participate on all areas of the county. There will be these free activities taking place, so come out Saturday. Thank you.
Well, thank you for everything that, excuse me, that you do and the event side of it, and I got to learn quite a bit. What are the age groups? What's the age groups for the activities on Saturday?
And especially the fishing, they really take them young, like three-year-olds.
Three to sixteen, oh, that's excellent.
Natural have something for everybody.
Veronica, thank you both for being here. Thank you, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Item number six is public comment. At this time, we have no speakers signed up, Judge. So no action for item number six.
Thank you.
Item number seven, regular agenda, postponed May 6, 2019, accept the quarterly report from the Juvenile Probation Department.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners.
Thank you Chief.
For the record, Roger Martinez, Chief Children and Probation Officer, County of El Paso. First of all, I want to thank you all for allowing me to come before you and speak and let you know what's happening this last quarter at JPD. And also be, we're very grateful for the ongoing support and financial support that this court offers to the department to run a efficient and effective department. Over the last quarter, we've had our intake, and let me, I guess, let me qualify this. We break this down to every unit within the department, somebody highlights up every particular unit. If there's any questions, I'll be open for any type of questions after I finish this report. We do have a tool that we use as evidence-based practice for assessment of youth coming into the system for criminal genetic needs, as well as their risks, which is called the PAC Tool. We have an inter-rater reliability score for all JPOs, which at this point is very, very high. We have one probation officer that did extremely well, Rosie Aguilar, which is at 100% proficiency. What they actually do is they give them a case scenario, utilizing some of the tools that they've had, and they should come with the same conclusion in order to get to the same rate that we need to score these children when they're coming through our system. In our detention unit, we have begun the installation of all the detention doors, again, provided by the CIP out of the county. There are 92 doors, I think we're down to one unit left to be installed, hopefully by the end of this week. We also had some of our directors attend the Emerging Leadership Training at Sam Houston State University. It was competitive process, they had to apply to go to this, and three of our staff members or directors were selected to go as part of succession planning. There was a complete conversion of our electronic third-shift observation checks, which is called Guard One. Guard Ones assists our officers in making sure that we're making the checks on a timely basis, and it actually computerizes the checks through a pipe that we have to actually go through the front of the door and touch in order to access or show that we made those checks, and also give an observation as to what that child was doing at the time of the check itself. We had a second quarter reemphasis on MI Booster. MI is motivational interviewing and other evidence-based practice, resulting in a 78% coding score for MI proficiency, which is pretty good. MI was not received very well initially, it was a little bit difficult for some people, but including myself, I was considered more of a fixer, someone who likes to just fix the issue rather than process and have the person allow them to fix their own issues as such. So they moved up into the 78 percentile, which is good, we're pushing towards that 90 and 200% eventually as well. There's also the girl-specific project and activities. We do have a Girl Scout troops that's organized there in the detention unit, where they do have girl-side activities, and they can also earn badges while they're there, and hopefully reconnect into a Girl Scout troop in the community once they have left the probation department. Under the Probation Services Unit, CBS and KFOX news reporter Selena Madrid agreed to emcee this year's Global Youth Service Day. It was a youth summit at El Paso Community College, it was held on April 13 of this year. We did have two events, one at the department and the We did have two events, one at the department and the other one was located again at the community college. At the community college, we had approximately 130 youth show up with about 30 volunteers within the department to help supervise the event. It was a learning event at this point in time where the youth heard from, I would call the heart of El Paso County, Rosa Guerrero, as she opened up the festivities that morning. And then it also included different therapists who came in and provided training on social media, on bullying or anti-bullying, and other topics that are teen-related there at the community college. It was very, very successful. We did also have a group of, I would call like your vendors or community supports that were there at the, on the outskirts of the, not the outskirts, but the outer perimeters of the actual conference itself where the summit was located. So, they took breaks, were able to go out there and meet up with a lot of the local community providers and get information from them as well. The highlight there was actually the El Paso Police Department that was there with them, and they began to build relationships with the youth that had been involved, that are involved in our system along with the police department there that day. We also coordinated and conducted a presentation and tour for the Family Leadership Council of the El Paso Norte Health Foundation. The persons that attended that were Liviana, EHN, the Mental Health Authority, El Paso Community College, NAMI, William Beaumont Medical Army Center, Fort Bliss, El Paso Center for Children, the Child Guidance Center, Peak Hospital, Paso Norte Foundation, and the Rio Vista Behavioral and Health Centers. They toured our facility, and we were able to spend some time there to get to know what we actually do at JPD as we continue to build bridges throughout the community. In our Clinical Services, we had three of our clinicians get advanced licensure. Abriel Padron obtained her full-licensed professional counselor. Francisco Torres is a full-licensed sex offender treatment provider. Diana Costa obtained her associate sex offender treatment provider license. Two members of the team have also been in training for the eye movement desensitation reprocessing, which is called EMDR. They've completed the supervision and one is already eligible for certification. That particular type of modality is to help kids that have been through trauma, and they utilize this mechanism that are like these two clicker balls in the hand that help the brain go back and forth as it goes back and forth to each side of the brain, and helps them process the trauma in order to be able to deal with it better. They know they can never erase it, but it'll help them get through portions of their life without having to relive that over and over again. Let's see, some of those same ladies I mentioned were also recipients of our awards. During our award ceremony, Diana Casada received the Joseph Volk Award. Abriel Padron received the new employee of the year, and Desiree Quintana was a clinical unit employee of the year. Under Special Programs Unit, we continue to have the ISP team engage in quarterly team-building activities, which allow the ISP team to work closely together. This group of individuals are working with our Drug Court, our Mental Health Court, our Gang Division, and then our, our special mental health cases that do not meet criteria for the Mental Health Court. So, they do need to work very closely in order to help each other out within their caseloads. The Drug Court and Special Needs Virginery Program are both presenting, well, they did present at the Texas Association of Specialty Courts Conference, which was in Corpus Christi. The Request for Proposals for Residential Treatment Services Centers rented 15 responses, and we're anticipating to award seven to 10 facilities within the next couple of months. In our Challenge Academy, for the first time in two years, the Challenge Academy is fully staffed, which is very tough to do because there's a whole lot that goes into hiring the personnel that go into the Challenge Academy, so we're in a good place right now. We only have two officers that are actually on active military duty. The Challenge Academy officially began its onsite welding class for cadets via the Delta Academy. EPISD has brought in all the welding machines and the canopy, and things that needed to be set up in order to have a welding class there at the Challenge Academy itself. They provide the instructor and all the equipment. We provided a slab and a awning for that particular class. Dr. April Thomas of UTEP began a sleep study in January with selected challenge cadets that relates to sleep patterns for incarcerated youth. We also have another cohort of children that are in our gang unit, and then another cohort of kids that are not in the system at all, and they're measuring sleep patterns of children in the various levels as part of a study that they're doing for the university. As far as, Challenge Academy has submitted, admitted to, four, we admitted, I'm sorry, four youths from surrounding four west Texas counties via regionalization and MOU, so we're servicing kids that are coming in from Midland and from Odessa, the Odessa area. The Training Unit certified 12 officers, six detention officers, four challenge officers, two probation officers, completed a week-long trainer for eight staff members to complete training, and completed the commercial sex exploitation, the SESET training tool with the Probation Services Core Group. Within the Maintenance Department, this is with the assistance of contractors and of course the funding from the county, installation of rooftop air conditions for units C and D and Clerical Unit Number Two, completed construction of the EPISD welding program, concrete slab and metal canopy in Challenge, and installed rubber flooring in courtroom one, jury room, police and victims waiting rooms, cashiers, and two interview rooms. That had to be replaced due to our store backup problem we had there, and so we realized as you go in the future, when you're looking at county buildings, you may want to consider more of the, rather than carpet, maybe some other type of flooring, for instances that occur like this, because it was not a very pleasant experience to have our people go through. We had to tear everything out of there, and it took us a couple of months to get it fixed, but it's in a much better situation now, and much more hygienic for everybody involved. As far as the Culinary Department, they received a new dishwasher under the CIP and was installed to its full operation. That dishwasher prior to that was there since 19, I think 92, so it was about time to get a new dishwasher in there. They've also got a new grill that's helping to create more different types of meals available for the, for the youth that are there at the department. And, let's see, Information Systems, they did complete the SESET exploitation identification tool, and they migrated that to our Noble Assessment Tools. So, they can only have to ask the questions one time and not have repetitive questions asked of youth that are going through our system. We also had private attorney e-signatures added to the modules for our private attorneys that are dealing with our youth in our system can have an actual queue that they go to that only identifies kids that are working, that they're working through their caseloads themselves. We also finalized the fact clearinghouse, which is a fingerprint-based application clearinghouse of Texas, and the FBI Civil RAP back program project for JPD active employees. That was 255 people that had to be re-fingerprinted for state standards in order to include them into the FBI background check. We're also doing this now with all volunteers and interns, as well as all vendors and contractors that we have at the department. Let's see, we provided also the juvenile probation officers and juvenile supervision officers a brandy to six-point star badges. What occurred there is that there was initial badges back many, many years ago, and they were changed to Eagles, which represents the city, which went back to the six-point star, which represents jurisdiction of the county. We had to maintain that we had the same type of badges, so when we went to the community, we identified as the same organization and not multiple types of IDs to the community. And then we purchased an industrial scanner in order to expedite the scanning and conversion and archiving of destruction process of approximately 33,000 juvenile physical files themselves. Right now we have physical files in the MDR building. We have two or three units at JPD, some of the, what do you, the storage units, and then of course, a whole bunch there in the office, so we began the process of destroying those. A couple of highlights that we had though that are not in this report, as we mentioned earlier, we've mentioned before, the Organization of American States and InterAmerica Drug Abuse Consortium out of Washington DC tapped our Drug Court to go to Peru and train the Peruvian delegation in how to set up a juvenile drug court, that was a few months ago. Then we also had a branch of the State Department with the interstate visitors bringing a delegation out of Israel and a delegation out of Thailand to meet with us in how we processed and worked with juvenile offenders in our jurisdiction that they could take ideas back to their countries and implement those as well. More recently, I'm, I'm a talker, and I have no problem talking to people, I guess, in airplanes and, I don't know, anywhere you want in a lobby area. Ended up sitting next to a gentleman on the airplane coming back from Dallas after a national conference, and ended up, long and short, ended up being Admiral Brett Girard. He just told me he was a pediatrician, I told him I was just a probation officer. By the time we finished our conversation, he ends up being the Assistant Secretary of, Secretary of Health and Human Services under the Trump administration. He was coming into town to provide a lecture at UTEP, which he invited me to attend. Before he left, he gave me one of his challenge coins, and I did not have one of ours there at the time, and so I did make sure I went to UTEP and provided one to him the very next day. He did ask that we sent him something that he'd like to hear what we do, suggest for the conversations we were having over the plane, says, "What y'all are doing in El Paso is very innovative, and I'd like to see what else y'all are doing and it can show that to us." So, we did come up with a presentation format, we did send it to him about a couple of weeks ago. He did say he was going to be reviewing that and getting back with us with any type of information or any type of help that he could possibly lend us himself. But I just found it very interesting that, you know, once you get your plane canceled, there's reasons for that happening, where you get to meet individuals as such and have those types of discussions, and hopefully maybe get us to yet another level. So, as you can see, we're working collaboratively locally, we work very strongly at the state level. We're now working nationally with many other departments across the nation through APPA, American Probation Patrol Association, and now we branch out internationally as well. So, we're just very, very blessed to have the individuals that are getting to do this. It all comes back to the line staff that are doing this. The persons on the front lines, people like the Sheriff's Department who are bringing these children into us, the El Paso Police Department, all the other law enforcement agencies, the first responders that are gaining these children to us and families. But then it takes the support of the Commissioners Court, the Juvenile Board, the Juvenile Board Chair in order for us to be able to push forward and create or make these ideas into realities, and that's what's occurred here. We are continuing in researching all of our projects here. We met with the IRB out of UTEP, which is the Institutional Review Board on Friday, and we did a cross-train between the board and ourselves here at JPD, so they can have an understanding of what we're doing here, because there's more studies that want to come out of the university into, into JPD as well. The other component that came into play is also the continued collaboration between JPD and the medical school. We have that psychiatric fellowship program going on four years now, where we have a psychiatric psychiatrist that is certified in child and adolescent psychiatry, working with three to four psychiatrists who are trying to get their certification in children and adolescent psychiatry, and they're housed there at JPD to do the work amongst our youth that are there in detention and challenge, including a pediatric rotation as well through the medical school for all kids needing physicals coming into JPD. All that being done is all at the, at the support of what the court provides to us, support what Juvenile Board provides to us. I think and more importantly, the hearts and the minds of the staff that are actually on the front lines doing the work. Any questions?
Chief Martinez, thank you. One of the reasons that I asked, you know the idiom, "You're not a prophet in your own land." Sometimes I don't think people recognize the work that's being done. Having been a probation officer way, way back and having the tour, I felt like it was the Stone Age, and then I was learning about technology and just so many things. And I have a deep appreciation for the holistic approach. As you and I had discussed, you know, when you were a probation officer, that's all you were. And you had no outreach, you had no, it was you and the youth in front of you, and your only, you know, only source that you had was yourself. And when I see the connectivity that you have with agencies and connecting the family with referrals, and it's just an amazing, so I just wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to tell you that we appreciate everything that's done and the recognition that you've received and the effort and the transparency, because, you know, you were very open about everything, you had your staff there, allowed me to be part of that dynamic, inner exchange of their presentations. So, I thank you for being here and thank you for keeping that at our forefront, that, you know, this is an incredible thing that's happening for juveniles that have to be in that situation. So, thank you very much, Chief Martinez.
Thank you Judge.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
We would need a motion to accept the report.
Accept.
Second.
Commissioner Bettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number eight, Board Appointments. Approve and authorize the appointment of Commissioner Vince Bettis's nominee, Marisa Marquez, to the El Paso County Housing Authority Board to fulfill the unexpired term ending May 14, 2019, and to appoint Ms. Marquez for a two-year term beginning May 15, 2019, through May 14, 2021.
Judge, Commissioners, Ms. Marquez has completed the required trainings to be considered for appointment.
Second.
Well, Judge, Commissioner, I'm actually move to delete this item. You know, it's, I just want to say, you know, Ms. Marquez has a long history of supporting El Paso County and helping us, but it's become, with all the activities of some of these board members that we're currently on previously, it's becoming increasingly difficult to find qualified board members, and Ms. Marquez had indicated that it's going to be a significant time commitment, you know, giving a lot of what's happening, and so with that, I'm going to move to delete this item.
Second.
Commissioner Bettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number nine, County Administration. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the 86th Legislative Session to include presenting information for the Court's consideration, removing or including bills on the county-state legislative agenda, and supporting or opposing filed legislation, and take any action necessary on aforementioned items.
Good morning Judge, good morning Commissioner.
Good morning, what's up, Alexa?
Anna Apolaca, Governmental Affairs. I'm here to provide you an update with regards to where some of our county bills are, and also where some of the bills of interest to the Court are heading. To start, just to let you know that SB 2, the House has appointed their Conferences, and so has the Senate, so that conference is already set up with their selected members. With regards to our county bills, we have our first bill to pass both the House and Senate, and that's HB 145, with regards to fees that can be charged by sheriffs and constables. It's on its way to the Governor for signature. Senate Bill 1402 with regards to undeveloped property for 25 years has passed the Senate, and it's been received by the House, and it's now headed to the consent, local and consent calendar for the House. Our bills related to occupational licenses, persons granting consent for inpatient mental health services, as well as final, fine adjudication and non-appellable bills, we're trying to attach to an omnibus court bill so that those can move further along. Currently, those bills are either stuck in committee or been sent to calendars and are waiting future push for that. And lastly, our county bill, HB 2747 regarding massage therapies, it's going to be amended to a separate bill so that that can move forward, and that bill is with, will be attached to Senate Bill 20. So, our bills are still proceeding, we're trying to find ways to get them pushed through this session, and so I will keep you abreast with regards to what happens to those. With regards to bills of interest for the county, the first bill I'm bringing to you is our firework bill that we opposed. That bill has actually been postponed until July 4th, 2019, which basically means I believe that bill is dead and not going to move forward anymore. Senate Bill 702 with regards to lobbying activities that the county can participate in has been left pending in committee, and we're not seeing any movement on that. House Bill 2826, which is a House bill that we were interested in because it would make certain contracts for legal services based on a contingent fee. It's been received for the Senate, by the Senate, and it actually is set for public hearing today. So, I'll keep you abreast and see what happens during that hearing. House Bill 4048 with regards to county-wide polling has actually been left pending in committee since April. I don't see any movement happening on that. House Bill 601, which is reporting requirements for criminal defendants with mental illness or intellectual disabilities, has now been received by the Senate, but it's been left pending in committee and since the beginning of the month. SB 2248 regarding the aerial tramway has been placed on the intent calendar, and it has not come out of there since early May. And right before walking in today, I found out that House Bill 2287, which is the El Paso Housing Authority Bill, is now received by the Senate and scheduled for public hearing this coming Friday. Today I'm bringing to you a couple of bills, actually three bills, that I'm going to ask for your opposition. The first bill is House Bill 477, and it's in regards to the notice requirement for issuing of certain for issue of certain debt obligations by political subdivisions. This would ultimately apply to all debt issues that are repaid with ad valorem taxes from the county and would increase the cost in regards to publication and maybe burdensome to some voters. I'm also bringing on a similar note to you SB six fifty-two. I'm really bringing this bill forth just because we don't anticipate any movement coming out of committee, but I want to be prepared just in case there is. What this bill does is it'll prevent the county from issuing any bonds within a six-year period for a project that was voted down by voters. Currently, the county can go back after three years. This actually expands that deadline. Also, what this bill is, would amend any certificates of obligation that have a maturity of five years or more, require that it be approved by the voters, and currently that maturity for us is thirty years or more. So I do believe that this would be burdensome for the county. As I said, it's been stuck in committee, and we're not foreseeing any movement on that. But just in case there is sudden movement, I like to have it on record where the court stands so that we can drop a card. And the last bill for opposition today is House Bill fourteen ninety-five, and it's relating to the authorization or the creation of a county ethics commission in certain counties and to authorizing counties to adopt a code of ethics for their Commissioners' Court. It's my understanding that this bill will now amend, the amended bill actually now deletes in its entirety a section of the code that would affect where the county, current county ethics commission was going with that. I have the county attorney who would like to speak more on that.
Good morning, County Judge Commissioners, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. I'm also the legal advisor to the Ethics Commission. Just one of the items and some background on this, HB fourteen ninety-five was introduced by a representative out of Houston. Specifically, this would allow Montgomery County to opt into and to adopt their own ethics code, ethics commission, to follow the statute similar to El Paso County. So that was, that was all fine and well, they certainly can do that. However, this past week, what they did is they introduced a floor amendment that would delete a specific definition of what a county public servant is. It is a definition that our Ethics Commission has adopted in their ethics code, and specifically what that definition is, is it defines a county public servant as an individual who is a candidate for office. And so what that means is that application of the county code of ethics would not apply to those individuals that would be running for office. One, when the legislation was introduced several years ago, it was very intentional that that definition included candidates for public office. Just going back to history in terms of where we were at that time and everything that we've since have come to learn as a result of the public corruption scandal, you know, it was just lessons learned of who was pursuing, who individuals were talking to at that time with regards to procurement matters. So for example, you'd have an individual who was running for office, who had not yet been elected, but they were talking to and they were having discussions regarding certain procurement matters, certain procurement matters that they then would come to vote on once they were elected to office. And so it was, again, very intentional as to why that definition was included. Our current county Ethics Commission is looking at that particular definition, and actually there is a recognition that it is quite broad in terms of how you define a candidate for public office. Does that mean an individual who has publicly made a statement, who has filed? And so they're looking to narrow that definition to an individual whose name will definitely appear on the ballot at that general election. So that could be your winner of your, you know, either political party's nomination for office, an independent or any riding candidate. But again, it's very specific as to those individuals whose name would be appearing on the ballot. So the county Ethics Commission could not move forward and pursue that avenue in terms of narrowing it and defining it if this entire section is deleted by Montgomery County. And so we have an interest in terms of keeping it, and so our recommendation is to ask the Commissioners' Court at this time to have a motion to oppose HB fourteen ninety-five as currently drafted, however, to, that would delete that specific section, one sixty-one point zero zero two eight D. And so that would be my recommendation. Are there any questions on that?
Okay, Christina.
Thank you.
Anna. There's also, just FYI, Joel texted me late Friday, and he's actually at a meeting at the city right now. I'm trying to find out if there was an amendment to a bill on Friday when he was in Austin. It's the statewide bell setting bill, and it's about creating a statewide validated pretrial risk assessment. And he said that there was amendment made to it on Friday that he thought actually detracted from the bill and made it less desirable. I don't know if it's to the level that we would necessarily want to oppose it, but this may come up during the week, so we may ask that we have a little flexibility if we find that it would be detrimental to the work that we've been doing. We may ask that we register opposition or a friendly suggestion to the bill as it's currently designed.
If it's the same bill I'm thinking of, which is, I believe, a House Bill forty forty...
HB twenty twenty?
I think it's HB twenty twenty?
Yes.
Yes. The court already voted to oppose a couple of weeks back on that.
Okay, perfect.
There are no being any further questions. I would like to ask the court to move to oppose these three bills moving forward.
To move to... Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
And Judge, before we finish this item, I just wanted to give you all an update on a meeting that I had. So I was in Austin last week at the Conference of Urban Counties with their Policy Committee, and typically when I'm in Austin, I'll make the rounds to talk to the, to the different members of our delegation. And, you know, I promised Representative Blanco that I would report back to the Commissioners' Court on the conversation that we had. I want to do so because I think it's important that you all understand some issues that have come up. You know, I, and it has to do with SB two. So SB two is the bill that would bring down right now the way it is in both the House and the Senate, and they're in conference committee right now, but it's a three and a half percent revenue cap as opposed to the eight percent rollback cap that we have right now. And it would call for an automatic election if we were to go over the cap instead of providing for a petition process. Last, I think it was two weeks ago, a number of the members of our delegation actually voted in favor of that bill, and something that, you know, I was very disappointed with because of the fact that I have been in Austin a number of times and in many of their offices, you know, talking about this bill and trying to explain why it would be so detrimental to us because of the restrictions that it place, that it would place on counties. Sixty-five percent of our budget is mandated by the state, and here in El Paso County, we see more and more growth in the unincorporated areas, and that's, you know, we're not allowed to limit that type of growth very easily. And so, you know, we find ourselves more and more having to spend, you know, our budget, our budget increasing because of the fact that we have to provide certain services in those areas. More and more people are moving to those areas, and they expect the same level of services as they do in the city when it comes to public safety, emergency services, you know, things like access to water and sewage and things like that. And, you know, I, so when the vote happened on second reading on April thirtieth, I reached out to the members of our delegation that voted in favor of SB two and let them know, I sent them a text saying that I was disappointed. Representative Blanco, he responded to me, "Let's talk about it in person." I said, "Okay, let me know when." You know, a number of days passed, and on May fifth, last Monday, he posted something on Facebook that, in my opinion, was basically straight out of the, you know, rhetoric in the playbook of the Republican leadership that has been attacking local control and attacking counties over the last number of sessions, trying to usurp our local control because, you know, cities and counties are becoming more progressive, and one of the ways that they can, you know, try to keep us from that being progressive is by taking away local control. You know, I was very surprised that Representative Blanco would actually utilize that rhetoric. It's very, I think it's rhetoric that attacks counties. It's rhetoric that puts us in a negative light. It talks about, you know, I mean, it has misleading statements like skyrocketing, you know, talking about they're skyrocketing property taxes in our area, and, you know, I think that it's very unfair to make that characterization, especially of El Paso County, because we have worked so hard to hold the line on taxes over the last four years. We haven't, we haven't raised taxes in the last four years, and last year, the county actually voted to lower taxes. And so I felt that making a blanket statement that property taxes were rising, you know, or that our property taxes were skyrocketing, without really explaining if property taxes are going up, why? And I just felt that it was very misleading. And, you know, it also talked about, you know, having to provide protections for taxpayers and insinuating that people like us are not, are not mindful and that we're here trying to be hurtful of our constituencies. And so I responded to him on Facebook after he posted that, you know, that misleading and attacking rhetoric, and, you know, on the Facebook post pointed out many of the truths about taxes in El Paso County. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, he responded as well, and it was a response that basically contained more of the same rhetoric and that had more misleading statements about El Paso and our taxes. He pointed out that, you know, taxes on the average went up by twenty dollars, but really didn't explain why. The reason why that is, is because there are other taxing entities that also assess tax, and also their appraisals went up last year. And those are all things that we at the county don't have authority over. But he proceeded to throw that out there and at the same time, talk about the fact that we raised our, we've raised our salaries. In the past, we voted to raise our salaries, especially me. You know, I felt that it was a deflection and really not getting at what, you know, the real, the real issue was. And so, you know, I went, I went to his office with, you know, the, with the intentions of trying to talk to him about this, because, you know, getting into arguments on Facebook, I think we probably shouldn't be doing that, and, you know, that's probably, that was my mistake. But, you know, when I see, when I see people making misleading comments, especially about the work that I'm doing and the work that we're doing here at the county, and especially when we work so hard, you know, it really bothers me, and I'm hard pressed to not call something like that out. But I went into his office with the intentions of talking to him to try and, you know, kind of calm things down before they got more adversarial. And that was the first thing that I told him when I sat down was that. And he, you know, was very condescending and said that, you know, that time had passed that, that it was not, that he was, that it was too late. And so, you know, I asked him why, and he, you know, he went on to tell me that I had personally attacked him. I think if you look at the post, there's not really a personal attack. You know, I say it's very unfortunate that people that voted for this may either don't understand or either they're turning a blind eye to the fact that this is just an attack on local control, and that I felt it was unfortunate that people were willing to use this type of rhetoric and to, and to basically, you know, scapegoat the, scapegoat counties in order to gain some political points so that they can come home and say, you know, that I voted for something that, that is going to lower your taxes when, you know, it's really, it's really not true. You know, and, you know, he talked about how he's always, he's always supported me, and I just don't think that that was, you know, much of, that was not a true statement. I don't think that he's ever really supported me. I know that he's worked on certain county bills, and that's fine, I think that's part of his job, but, you know, he, he talked about how he thought that we had, you know, a better relationship. And I said, "Well, you know, if you want to talk about our relationship, why don't, you know, if you thought that we had such a great relationship, and then why didn't you let us know that you were going to change your mind?" And, I mean, like I said, I've been in his office a number of times talking about this bill, never received any indication as to, you know, his willingness to vote for something like a three and a half percent revenue cap. And, you know, I put it back on him, I asked him, you know, "Why, if you thought our relationship is so, if our relationship is so good, then how come you couldn't call us and give us, you know, just a courtesy and let us know, 'Hey, y'all, you know what? I've changed my mind.'" Because we were blindsided, I feel, by his vote. You know, and as the, as the conversation went on, he, you know, he got upset, and he repeated that I had attacked him. And I, you know, I obviously told him, "Well, I mean, I feel like we were attacked first. I think that the counties were, and us personally, you know, here in El Paso, that it really wasn't fair." You know, whatever his vote, whatever his vote may have been, that's his prerogative, but, you know, by trying to mislead the public and attacking us, you know, I didn't feel that, that I was correct. And, you know, he then accused me of yelling at him. You know, I was definitely in a, and not in the calmest state, but I don't think I was yelling at him. I don't think anybody's ever heard me yell, much less at an elected official, but, you know, he told me that I was not allowed to disrespect him in that form. You know, he said, "You know, this is my office. You can't come in here and talk to me like that." You know, I said, "You know, I'm sorry if, I'm sorry if you think I'm yelling at you. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but, but this is actually not your office. This is the state Capitol, and, you know, the taxpayers paid for this, paid for this office, and so you may be inhabited of this office, but it's not, it doesn't belong to you. It belongs to the people." You know, he also... You know, he also tried to insinuate that because I'm a white man and he is Latino, that I was somehow attacking him racially. I really was quite surprised by that, very, very surprised by that. I think people who know me know better. And, you know, I tried to explain to him, you know, that, you know, that property taxes aren't skyrocketing here, that you can't hide from the facts. And he said, well, at the city they are. And I said, well, then you need to make that distinction. You can't make that blanket statement. It's really unfair because it's misleading, you know, and it puts us in a bad light. Also, at one point in the conversation, you know, when I pointed out that he was hurting the county, you know, he even brought up the Veteran Service Officers Bill that we, that, you know, that Betsy asked us to propose, that, you know, would have allowed us to work much, much more easily with our Veteran Services Officer and be more responsive, I think. And, you know, he brought that up and said, you know, basically that we were insinuated that we were anti-veteran because we were trying to pass a bill that would disenfranchise veterans. I was completely taken aback by that too, because I was under the, I thought that in the beginning, he might, he was probably the person that was going to take that bill and carry it. It ended up being Art Fierro and there were some pushback from veterans because they felt that it would keep veterans and the Veteran Service Officer from being able to approach the Commissioners Courts directly, which, you know, I think all of us have an open door policy when it comes to anybody, especially veterans and, you know, but it was just, it was quite interesting to, for, that he would bring that up and try to, you know, insinuate that we're anti-veteran because we brought that bill. You know, I just, I feel like, again, it was a, he was very condescending, you know, the comments about being his office and, you know, you know, and refusing to acknowledge the truth, that refusing to acknowledge that his initial attack was called for and was uncalled for in damaging counties. You know, I was, in some forms, I'm, you know, I was very, very upset with the meeting. It really, it really bothered me, but also it kind of showed me his true colors and, you know, we can all, we can all disagree on things. I mean, there are other, there are other members of the delegation that voted against this and I've reached out to them as well, but none of them took that extra step to sponsor and add with misleading statements. And so, you know, I think that, you know, some of the conversations that we've had at the Conference of Our Counties, you know, we really need to set the record straight as a Commissioners Court. I think that we need to work as hard as we possibly can to make sure that the taxpayers, that the community understands that, at least on the county side, you know, we, there, you know, there are reasons why if we do increase, if we do increase taxes, I think we need to really put out there, you know, if we want to talk about truth in taxation, I think every time that we advertise our tax rate and we should break out that tax rate, out of that tax rate and point out that 65% that is mandated by the state that they don't help us out with. You know, I think that we need to, you know, I personally am going to and planning on reaching out to the El Paso Times Editorial Board to, you know, writing, I think that we should write an op-ed, you know, basically defending ourselves against these attacks, you know, attacks that we never thought would be coming from our own delegation or a member of our own delegation. But I think that we really need to, to do that, because if you look at the comments that are below, you know, the thread that, in the back and forth that we had, it's clear, very clear to see that people are, you know, it's confusing, right? People are confused about what the city does, what the county does and, you know, where taxes are, you know, why people's property values, taxes are going up, whether it's property values, whether it's school, you know, school taxes, I mean, 55% of what, 50 to 55% of what people pay in property taxes actually go to the school. And the reason why that's been going up over the years is because the state has shirked its responsibility in providing funding for public education. That's something that they're working on as well. And of course, SB 2 is, one version of SB 2 is contingent upon, on a public finance bill passing, which is, which is fine, but, you know, I think that we need to defend ourselves and make sure that the public is, you know, very, it's very clear to the public, you know, the truth. And so, you know, I hope you all will join me when we go talk to the Editorial Board and if you'd like to help co-author an op-ed that, you know, that I think we should definitely send to the media, but, you know, this type of, these types of attacks and these types of, you know, misleading statements, I think we need to stop. They need to stop. And so, you know, I don't know, I don't know what you all think, but, you know, I was very disappointed, very disappointed with what happened. Like I said, we can all disagree, but when these types of attacks and untruths are being put out about us, we need to step up.
Commissioner Pils, any comments?
You know, it's disappointing. I think it's clear that many of those who voted in favor, you know, of that legislation just don't have an understanding of local budgets or local needs, you know, and the whole issue of local control. You know, as Commissioner Stout mentioned, you know, we've done our best to hold the line on taxes here and actually decreasing the tax rate last year in an effort to demonstrate that, you know, when property values do increase, you know, we're going to do our best to offset that as best as we can to make sure that, you know, if we do ever go to taxpayers for an increase, you know, we're doing it because it's absolutely necessary. And if we don't need a tax increase, then we're not going to do it. And if it is possible to reduce taxes, you know, when we're seeing increasing property values, then we're going to do it. I mean, I think we've done our best to show how a responsible local governing body should operate, you know, and trying to be mindful of balancing the needs of providing essential services, you know, while also, you know, trying to minimize the burden on taxpayers. You know, the bill just doesn't make any sense to me for a variety of reasons. The latest version exempts hospital districts and community college districts. And so while we've held the line here on taxes, you know, for four or five years here at the county, your taxing rate has increased almost close to the 8% threshold on the hospital district side. But yet they exempt hospital districts, you know, from that. It just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense, you know, it's, not many media outlets are reporting the impact that this would have on local government. I'm glad to see that there's some media here at least. But, you know, it's, it is very likely that down the road, the county would likely have to consider layoffs or other reductions in services in order to comply with this legislation. It unfortunately done fairly hamstrings, you know, local decision makers and I think it's going to have very negative impacts down the road.
I agree. Commissioner, I think it was important for that clarification and you're right, you know, we were, even myself, I'm, you know, being new, you know, four months into it, I had, you know, one of the big allies that we had was a delegation. And we were very well aligned with them understanding the impact on our community and the impact on our county. And so, in a sense, we're caught a little flat-footed, not understanding that, like you said, Commissioner Stout, that there was plenty of opportunities to give us a heads up and have discussions and open dialogue, which is what we're known for. And they're recognized, the legislation got a lot of accolades about being very candid and open and very connected to our community. So I think we do need to make that clarification and especially the hard work. Like I've always said, I can't take a lot of credit for what's happened, but I'm aware of everything that has happened by the Commissioners and the previous judges to hold the line on taxes. And then to, you know, you know, one of the things I heard is we're paying the price for a lot of counties that had gone overboard on taxes. And so that is so unfair, that year after year, holding back and doing the best we can and others sort of took off, which that makes them at a huge, you know, advantage because they do have some of the money that they sort of went beyond the 4%. And so here we are in this situation. So I think we do need solidarity and, you know, we'll have an opportunity to discuss that going forward and how we're going to approach that, some of the recommendations of both Commissioners, you know, how are we going to make it a reality of this solidarity and to clarify and to inform our community.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number 10, Judiciary and Corrections. Approve and authorize an increase to the voucher payment to interns from $15 to $25 for an overall increase in the amount of $5,000 for the operation of the Court Visitor Program for probate court number two. For this item, we are requesting to have it deleted per Budget and Fiscal Policy Department.
Move to delete?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 11. Approve and authorize a county judge to sign the Oliviana-Samsa Services Agreement as amended May 2019 with Oliviana, Inc. and the DWI Drug Court Intervention and Treatment Program to provide counseling services to DWI program participants in the amount of $254,210 per year. This contract is effective beginning September 30, 2018 and will be awarded on an annual basis for up to five years. Funding is available in SG-G Samsa 19 Operating Expenses, Contract Number 2019-0179.
Good morning. Letitia with the DWI Drug Court Program.
Good morning, Letitia.
Good morning. The reason we're requesting for this amendment, when we wrote this grant, we requested for Oliviana to bill us for services. But then later we realized that it was best too for them to bill us for salaries because the counselors were not able to be present at our staffing or our review hearings. And that's what the best practices of drug court entails. So we went, we ran this through Samsa, our, the director, and they agreed to allow us to amend this as long as we don't move the dollars. The dollars will remain the same.
Staff, have any comment on this at all?
What was that, Commissioner?
I was wondering if staff had any. Move to approve if there's.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Letitia.
Was this the item? I'm sorry, can we move to reconsider this item?
So move.
You need Letitia?
Was this the item that was more appropriate for budgetary discussions?
That was the item number 10 that we deleted.
Okay, then I withdraw.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Withdraw my motion.
Item number 12, Litigation, Justice, and Law Enforcement. Approve and authorize a county judge to sign Amendment Number One to operating agreement Food Services with Aramark Correctional Services LLC for food services at the downtown detention facility and the jail annex. The amendment extends the term of the agreement from May 1, 2019 through April 30, 2020, implements an automatic per meal price increase and an increase in kosher meal prices. Funding is available in SO Detention Contract Services General and SO Jail Annex Contract Services General, Contract Number 2019-0330.
Judge, Commissioners, this is one, there is someone here from the kitchen at the jail, but this is the one that I notified the court that I was looking into the CPI rates that were being used in the contract. After further evaluation of the contract, it actually refers to a specific CPI rate that is used and it's based on food away from home cost. And those have increased at the rate identified in these specific proposals. I have spoken to the Sheriff's Office about, there is an ability in the future for us to try to negotiate on those rates, but because this is retroactive for 2018 rates, that we wouldn't be able to go back and negotiate because the contract says if negotiations haven't taken place, these are the rates that are used. But going forward, we will negotiate and also will be modifying the contract, proposing an amendment to the contract to identify what month that we will identify from year to year, because right now it does not clearly identify what month of CPI rate change we will use, so we will fix that in the future. But I don't know if Jesse, I believe, is here and if he has anything else he wants to add. As you know, we contracted these services out a few years ago, or a couple of years ago, and it has performed well.
Jesse? Good morning, Jesse.
Services for Aramark County jails. The date that we were looking for, our contract started in May, so we're going to try to see we can do it in January. That way we could give the opportunity to the Sheriff's Office to budget whatever funds they need pending the contract. The cost increase is automatically on the contract and it's based on the market basket price determination settlement or statement. And this year it's for 2.90%. You know, the cost of food goes up, gasoline goes up, so that affects our ability to charge the Sheriff's Office on that. That's all. Any questions?
Just Betsy? What are your thoughts on that or what?
At this time, we're in agreement with the, and supportive of the amendments currently, but going forward, we will work to negotiate those rates and also identify the month of rates that would be used if we are not able to negotiate a lower rate.
When would you go into negotiations?
Well, once we identify that month, it says in the contract that in April of each year, we'll look at that rate or we will negotiate. It's my understanding we have not negotiated previously, but it's something I do believe we should sit down with a vendor and discuss.
So this will be near future kind of thing or?
Next year.
Next year, January, like as you stated, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
But overall, when we look at how much it costs us to provide this before we contracted it out, this is a better route for us to be taking for food services in the jail. And Jesse was with us before?
I was a county employee for about 18, 19 years. I ran the downtown jail. Aramark decided to take over the contract through the Sheriff's Department, so it's been an easy transition for us. The inmates are happy, the food is good, no issues whatsoever. It's just the minor stuff, you know, the contract. The contract was for three years. After the third year, they're going to do an evaluation and maybe extend it for two more years, I believe. But, you know, we're always working with the sheriff. The sheriff and Aramark are happy with each other, so we'd like to move forward with this. are happy with each other, so we'd like to move forward with this.
Okay, move to approve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 13. Approve and authorize the acceptance of the Operation Stone Garden 2016 Supplemental Grant Award of $314,397.77 to purchase five vans and operational costs for the period of May 1, 2019 through June 30, 2019, with no county match required. Contract Number 2019-0331.
Good morning, Court. Ryan Udo, the commander of the Patrol Bureau. I'll pass it to the sheriff's office.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. So what we're, what we want to do is we've been offered money from Stone Garden to help facilitate the self-surrendering migrants to their processing facilities. So this will pay for vehicle expenses as well as fuel and salaries over time. What we really want to do is we want to help in the humanitarian side of this issue and prevent a scene like we saw under the Paso del Norte Bridge last month, to where everybody's being housed under there. So our involvement would be simply movement of migrants from the self-surrendering point to their processing point.
So just on a side note, Commissioner Stout had made me aware of the Stone Garden funds, other communities using these Stone Garden funds for the purposes of refugees. When we saw that the sheriff's office was getting this, we were, our questions, and I spoke to Chief Witten, were whether or not these funds were going to be used for moving federal prisoners or migrants. And it is basically refugees who have surrendered to Border Patrol. And so that's, that's the purpose of this. It's another way the county is assisting in addressing the migrants.
So it'd be from, from Border Patrol custody to processing center, as in, as in the one that the federal government is setting up, or to like the hospitality centers that, that the nonprofit, the nonprofit organizations have?
They would, the Border Patrol would facilitate the movement from their processing to the nonprofit. Once they process, do their required federal paperwork, then they would go to the nonprofit. We would just facilitate movements, like you've seen, where they're self-surrendering near the bridges, or at open access points on the bridges. We would help facilitate the movement from there to Station One, which would be where they facilitate and process through, and then Border Patrol would deliver them to the nonprofits. We wouldn't get involved in that. We just want to, what we really want to do is we want to make sure we don't have another scene like the Paso del Norte Bridge scene, where everybody's being housed under a bridge. And we want to help, get involved in the humanitarian side, make sure if we can help prevent something like that happening again.
With this support, it doesn't distract you in any way from, you know, some of the things that you have to do, or, you know, the number of officers? And I think one of the things we're sensitive is that what happened in the border, where we were, you know, they're moving the Customs into Border Patrol, and we had issues in the Customs, and so it left a huge gap there. In this situation, is there any way that it would distract you? Because you guys are doing an incredible job, but would that distract you from, from your own services that you provide to the community as sheriffs?
Judge, no, that's a good question, and no, it would not, because it's all overtime. So we would not pull any of our existing resources that are on regular duty. Stone Garden would still operate in its capacity, which is providing a security to our, our community. And then these officers would just be working on an off-duty capacity as well. It would be overtime, and anybody that wants to work, they would just volunteer. And we put them on a list of who's working that day, and then they go out and help on these occasions.
I wonder what Customs should have done, right? I mean, do it over and above their, their own duties, not within their duties, because that created issues for you as well? You know, drugs passing a little freer and all these things?
Well, no, not at all, Judge, because we would still maintain our staffing levels. The staffing levels, we would not, we would not pull to help aid in this. If we just, if we don't have personnel on duty that day, then we just don't.
Oh, okay.
We don't provide it unless somebody's signed up and working that, that shift. There's no obligation for us to fulfill the commitment if nobody signed up.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
So it's not like a mandatory, once you commit to so many hours, or, I know, because, you know, we've learned how difficult it is, it is in the county and things that you have to do, and it just, just, I'm a little sensitive that you're pulled away, but this is at your own?
No, 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 sir. We would not pull a single resource that's being paid. If an individual's being paid, one of our officers is being paid by county funds, he's providing a county service. We want to make sure he's on the field, he's providing safety to the community, he's out there. This would only be officers that are on their days off, or on their hours off, and they could sign up and work overtime.
And I have another question, Judge. So it says, operational costs from, from May 2019 to June 30, 2019. So basically, two months' worth of operational costs is what this would cover?
It, it does cover five vehicles. So we're buying, we're looking to purchase five 15-passenger vans. After the operation is done, they are available for use for the county. So they have that caveat, we'll be able to use them for facilitating movements of our own inmates after we're done with them. And they'll, they'll be, they'll be fitted with radios like our, like our normal vehicle purchases are done.
The grant allows us to use the funds for like fuel, maintenance, other types of costs otherwise allowable under Operation Stone Garden Award. Let's see.
Well, I mean, I'd like to see if we can also, because I know that the Stone Garden money can be used for even housing of immigrants and can be used for transportation.
So it does specifically say in the, I'm looking at the grant award documents, and it says, let's see, costs incurred, once the custodial responsibility of the individual is transferred to Customs and Border Patrol, are not allowed under Operation Stone Garden. So that doesn't allow us to use this funding for expenses after they're in Border Patrol's custody. So I would say that this allows us to get them to that point, which, and I, and I can't speak, I would need to speak to Border Patrol myself, or maybe one of the sheriff's officers have. But it may, this assistance on the front end may also help Border Patrol with their resources to be able to do more on the back end, because they won't be dedicated to the front-end movement as greatly.
Exactly. So what we'll do is we'll take the place of what Border Patrol is pulling resources to do now, which is transport, and they'll use our resources to do this transporting within El Paso County. So their resources can remain in place. So instead of pulling, say for that day, pulling five or six Border Patrol agents to transport, they would use us, and we would pick up at the self-surrender points where the migrants are and take them to the transport, to their process facility. Rather than them have to wait downtown somewhere for somebody to free up, go get them and bring them out, we would do that movement.
Just from my understanding, the moment that officer, is he still a sheriff? I mean, is he still acting on behalf of being a sheriff, or?
Yes, sir. We still have, we're still in full law enforcement capacity. They're, they're working on overtime, so they're covered by all, you know, all workers' comps and so forth. And we are not, we are not taking law enforcement action with the migrants.
You're not there apprehending the folks?
No, no, sir. We, if they come, like you've seen, you know, we've seen several of them down here, a hundred, group of 100, and they come and self-surrender. So all Border Patrol would do is say, look, I've got a group of 50, they're self-surrendered, they're claiming asylum, and, okay, great. We go, we just bring them, take them from that self-surrender point, and we transport them to their processing station, at whichever, wherever that designated area is. And it helps expedite that for them coming in, and it helps free up areas, you know, like we've seen them, we've seen these, these mass movements where we're seeing 2, 300 at a time, and they're forced to sit there for a day or so. And we want to just help facilitate, get them out of there. We don't want that humanitarian issue to sit there and linger. And, you know, it's not a true representation of our community.
Yeah.
So for the amount being allocated, obviously, this is what we've identified as the use. I don't know if there will be additional funding available, but according to the grant programs information bulletin, these funds generally were allowed to be used for certain costs related to transportation, medical care, medical emergency countermeasures, and unmanned aircraft systems.
So that's, that's specific to this grant, right? This, this grant itself. But from what I understand, like in, in the article that I sent you, Betsy, other, other communities, they can use Stone, Stone Garden money for even providing shelter or housing?
Correct. But this particular allotment of funding does not say anything about shelter or housing. So we'll have to look to see if there's another tranche of funding available that could be used for shelter or housing.
Okay. I mean, I, I think we definitely need to, to look into that, because it's, I mean, there, if there are funds that we can utilize to, to help with, with, with the housing as well, because as you know, the Annunciation House has procured, procured this larger facility, and, you know, they have, I think, I think it's paid for up to like four months out, four or five months out. Somebody picked up the tab for that. But moving forward, they're going to need additional, additional help with, with, with funding. And, and seeing another community in Arizona utilizing Stone Garden for, for something similar to that, you know, that's why I started asking Betsy the question and was, you know, had her, we reached out to Chief Witten about whether or not we could use the Stone Garden funding that we have, because we just approved another Stone Garden grant not too long ago, probably within the last month or so.
And I believe those are based on the allotments, the, whatever Border Patrol puts as the initiative. Now, that initiative is in place. We haven't explored into that initiative yet, or what funding has been allocated for, for those in this area. But that's something we can reach out and ask. From my understanding, the Stone Garden is, it's, it's not a pull from one to pay for another. So we would have to apply under that initiative.
Sure, for another, for another tranche of money.
Yes, sir. And, and that may be something that the nonprofit would have to apply for, for directly. I'm not sure if we do it on their behalf, but we can, we can explore what is necessary.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Perez?
Thanks. A quick question. I mean, you know, because one, one question or concern that I have is that, you know, we still have a high population of federal inmates who are there for immigration-related charges. Our population's running between 700 and 800 a day. And so, I mean, I guess it's difficult to say with, with certainty that immigrants that are coming over to surrender at these self-surrender points are all going to hospitality centers. I mean, because there is inevitably a high number of individuals that are being charged criminally. I don't know how the Border Patrol does it, but, but there are individuals that are being charged for first-time entry, maybe they eluded inspection, or there's a lot of re-entries. I mean, is, are any of these vehicles going to be used in the transport of those individuals to?
Well, I'm sure there's individuals in those groups, but that's not something we would determine. We, we're just facilitating the movement from the surrender point.
It does, I apologize, Lieutenant, but it does specifically say in there that the agency will not be used in determining the outcome of?
No, I know they won't be used in the, in determining the outcome, but, but will we be involved in the transport, like, let's say, to the jail?
Oh, no.
And it just, you know, I mean, just overall, just, you know, the concern with these types of grants and these types of activities is, you know, I mean, is there a question of whether, you know, to what extent our local law enforcement agencies are involved in immigration enforcement? Well, to a certain extent, we are, right? I mean, you, we're providing backup to the Border Patrol. But, you know, I think, you know, if there is even a possibility that some of these transport vehicles could be used to transport individuals to the jail, I think that just starts entering more enforcement activities.
Well, we're not determining them at any point. So our, our facility, once they get moved to their processing center, if they are determined at some point that he was, he committed a murder here and he's re-entering, then Border Patrol would do their initiative, and they would book him, because he's under a federal crime. So we're not facilitating a booking under federal, we're not, we can't enforce federal law, we would need some, a federal agent to do so. But that would be for them to determine, not for us. That would be done at their facility. I mean, we all, you know, we're, we're facilitating the movement of, of just the migrants. And if there's criminals in there, that, which there probably are, you know, because you can get on a city bus, and there's probably a criminal on there. You know, we're still, still taking movement of somebody. You know, we're not going to determine that. We're not going to determine that. We're not, we're not going to arrive there and take 15 of them and check each one before we
Right.
we get in there. We're just going to make sure that they're safe to move. Nobody, of course, has a weapon in there, because we want the safety of everybody in that, in the, in our vehicle. And then we're going to move them to the location that they're processing.
But is there a possibility that, let's say, Border Patrol is short transport vehicles, and they've identified perhaps, like, let's say, 10, 10 individuals?
We have already made it very clear to them that we are not going to get involved in that. That's not what our intent is. And that's been very clearly written in the grant, and our stance on this is we are not going to facilitate that movement.
Yeah, I think the facilitation and the humanitarian is so important. But like, I'll go back to Commissioner Stout, what he says is sometimes we don't get the, the credit. And it's, you know, every morning, when I get the, there's 980 refugees coming in. Sometimes I feel like the county hasn't stepped in yet and become part of it. So I do hope that at least this is one contribution that we're facilitating, trying to help things happen, you know, move things along. Because that's, everybody is completely concerned about a backup, a backlog. Oh, my goodness. If we have people backing up, that's when all the problems.
And I don't think we, I don't, like I said, I don't think that, like that photo where everybody saw in the El Paso Times of the Paso del Norte Bridge, that's not a representative of our, of our community. And I think we want to avoid issues like that from happening, you know, because that doesn't shed the best light on El Paso, El Paso County, and that's not what, what this community is about. We want to make sure that things like that don't happen again.
Yeah. And, and you know, we, I hope you understand our questions, because we're always afraid to move in to an area that we, we have sort of a certain philosophy or decision that we're going to do certain things.
Yes.
And sometimes we're concerned that we're sort of slipping into an area that we don't understand. But I think you've clarified strictly facilitation, it's not going to detract you from your
Yes.
from, from what you have to do. And then if you could just keep us informed as to how things are going, since you have that option of yes or no
Yes, sir.
to keep the court informed as to, is this working? And then just be very, I think, vigilant that, that we stay really close to what we agreed on.
Absolutely, sir.
So I'd like to move to approve.
I just have one, one more question on the time. So it's until June, until June 30th, and then, and then after that, we won't be using those vans in the future to, to, to be doing the same thing? It's just going to be using the grant money, and then after that, it won't be?
Well, will we apply?
Because it just seems like a very small amount of time. We're already?
Well, the way this, this kind of ended up being kind of elongated, because we were in these talks with, with Border Patrol of what we will do, what their expectations were, and they would come back with something. We'd tell them, no, we're not going to get involved in that. So we really set a hard line, and that's why I kind of stretched this out. You know, so we can apply for extensions, but we can also look forward to the next grant funding cycles where we can reapply and still stay involved in this. You know, so the money, if the money's available, of course, we're going to come and re-ask the court if we can go, go forward with this, and we're going to keep the initiative going. Under the same parameters, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to be, we're not going to allow the county to be forced into things we don't want to do. You know, bottom line.
Judge, Commissioners, Wally Hargrove, Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. When we became aware of this notice through our Grant Division and the sheriffs, we also engaged in a quick turnaround discussion with our Fleet Management Department and purchasing. A June 30 deadline is a pretty quick, short, hard deadline for us to acquire these assets. So we're working very diligently on moving that process along. And I think Mr. Staple has something that he wants to add on.
Yes. Good morning, Judge, Commissioner
Good morning.
Hope and Staple, Fleet Operations Director. So I've checked with our purchasing department to see if there's any way to, I don't want to say bypass the normal procedure, if there's
Expedite, maybe?
If there's any way to get them quicker. We've checked with three cooperatives, and the soonest we'll see these vehicles is six to nine months. So I just wanted to make that clear, that we're not just going to go buy them directly from, say, Rudolph Chevrolet, because we cannot do that. The soonest we could get them is through a cooperative, and it's a six to nine months before they're delivered to us.
How does that work?
I think the deadline that Commander is speaking about is to have the purchase order issued out.
Yes.
Well, I mean, because it says the operational costs for the period of May 1, 2019 through June 30, 2019, if, if you don't have the vans by, I mean, I don't
We'll have them purchased. We'll have the agreement in place, Commissioner, and then that's good enough to where the Stone Garden is fine with us as long as we've got the purchasing. Like I said, we can ask for extensions in the funding. And they've been pretty gracious in granting those extensions. So those are things we can explore as we wait, because right now, they're, they're, they're really going to be, they're, they're going to allow the extensions, because they want us to help them with these movements.
Right. Well, but my point is, the item, the agenda item says we're approving operational, this for operational costs for the period of May 1, 2019 through June 30, 2019. How are we, how do we have operational costs if we don't even have the vans?
Well, we do have vans in our fleet right now.
Okay, so you're going to be using current?
We'll use current vans, and then we'll bring in these ones, and then they'll take over.
And, and just on a quick, I mean, the timeline, there, in the grant document I'm looking at, it doesn't specify a specific, I mean, we do have to spend the I'm looking at, it doesn't specify a specific, I mean, we do have to spend the funds by June 30th, but as far as like the life of the program, it, it says it's gonna be reviewed within five days from the, five years from the date of issuance. And I think the date of issuance was, um, January 31st, 2019. So it doesn't sound like we're restricted to, while we have to have the funds spent to procure the, the vehicles, it doesn't sound like the program is expected to, uh, have been completed by that period of time.
But Betsy, the usage of our vans, is that included in...
It does say that it costs for reimbursement of, uh, it does include reimbursement of cost as described, and then it says allowable cost and guidance. And so it would be reimbursement of those costs as well.
It'll be reimbursement of mileage as well as fuel. So those are already built into Stone Garden. Every mile will be reimbursed, and all fuel is reimbursed as well.
And if I could supplement that as well, my understanding is, um, the procurement or the actual issuance of the purchase order would need to be June 30th or earlier. That is a commitment from the county to expend those funds for their intended purpose.
And, and we have the additional vehicles, Staple, to, uh, to use them while we're waiting for the other?
My understanding, Judge, it would be vans currently within the Sheriff's Department. The only other department that has a 15-passenger van, we have one in Community Service, one in the three, the fourth District Court, and a, a eight-passenger in Election. Other than that, all the other ones are in the Sheriff's Department.
So we'll, we'll have sufficient vans now?
Yes.
To provide the, okay. Okay, that's, that's better clarification for my...
We'll use existing fleet until this comes out.
Okay. Commissioners? Move to approve?
Uh, I'll say, I mean, so long as it's, again, not the, we don't get into that slippery slope of enforcement, you know, which is, I think, is squarely a federal responsibility, and we just gotta make sure that the Border Patrol isn't, um, you know, putting more on our local law enforcement agencies that, you know, that if they're gonna pursue these types of policies, you know, that they need to hire more Border Patrol agents, they need to hire more folks to do the transport. I just don't want them shifting that burden on, onto local governments. But if this is, um, you know, for humanitarian purposes and doesn't go over to the enforcement side, I'll second that.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. For the information.
Item number 14, Public Works. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the amendment to the summer food service agreement with Anthony ISD to provide meals to children under the age of 18 or persons 19 and over who are mentally or physically disabled. Anthony ISD will solely operate the program and is requesting the use of the Ascarate Pool as an additional distribution site from June 3rd, 2019 through August 9th, 2019. There is no cost to the county. Contract number 2019-0258.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Norma Rivera Palacios with the Public Works Department. In February, the court authorized the distribution of the meals at both the Westway and the Gallegos Park. We had requested that the Anthony Independent School District consider other county parks, and so they've come back and have agreed to provide the meals at Ascarate Pool. This is where we see a lot of children visit the park and stay throughout the day, so we think that it would really benefit the community. And so today, we're, we're asking for your favorable, uh, consideration of this item. Any questions?
No, just that it's a great program, because it's so isolated, you know, so if they go in, um, they're pretty far away from being able to get the meals that they should be getting, so...
And that's what we thought, so...
I think this is a...
Great program.
Great program.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Item number 15. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Texas Department of Transportation FY18-5339 discretionary grant agreement in the amount of $168,000 to provide capital and equipment and continued commuter bus service for rural El Paso County. Contract number 2019-0307.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Salonzo Planning Development Department. Uh, this item before you is, uh, 5339, uh, discretionary funds that would go towards purchasing, uh, capital equipment such as, uh, buses for our fleet. Staff recommends approval, I'll be happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have.
Just, Sal, any update on Sun Metro and, you know, sort of going into the rural areas and how this would sort of work with each other?
Uh, yes, in, in fact, we do have an item, uh, this Thursday's for the special session, uh, that will be providing the court an update on the outreach that we have done with the local agencies such as Clint, Horizon, Socorro, and San Alley. So we'll be providing an update, uh, this Thursday at the special session.
So you're taking, uh, into account this amount and how it would impact if we went in with Sun Metro, right?
Yes, what this would do is it would just add more buses to the fleet. So if we would, uh, uh, go down that path of, about joining with Sun Metro, it just, it's added more, uh, be adding more vehicles to provide, uh, better service for the areas.
Mr. Perez? Comments? Move to approve?
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 16, Purchasing. Approve and authorize the purchase of three full-size 4x2 half-ton pickup trucks, V8 crew cab, four full-door short-bed Ford F-150, two mid-size SUV 4x2 V8 Chevrolet Tahos, and two mid-size four-door sedans, DART chargers for the County of El Paso using Byboard Cooperative Contract Number 521-16 awarded to Sillsby Ford of Sillsby, Texas, and Cowboy Motor Company of Sillsby, Texas, as well as Tarrant County Cooperative Bid 2019-041 in the total amount of $216,500. Purchasing approved on May 7, 2019. Funding is available in Grants, GS, MUG, GIN 17, and G-Multi 17.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent.
Good morning, Deborah.
In this case, we're asking for use of two cooperatives. One will be by board, and one will be the Tarrant County Cooperative. That's a very recent bid, and so the pricing is good. In this case, we're also wanting to use the cooperative instead of straight bid for vehicles, which is the norm, because we have a time sensitivity related to obtaining these, and it cuts off about 14 weeks.
Which, which department is this for?
Fleet, and Hopeston's here if he needs to speak.
Good morning, uh, Court. Uh, Hopeston Staple again, uh, Fleet Operations Director. This is for, uh, Sheriff Department, uh, Special Mission Unit. And they're on the same timeline with a deadline of 30 June of this year to have a purchase order issued. Haida?
That was just, I, I guess that, that there's, those three, uh, half-ton pickup trucks, I mean, they're have the, the largest engines and all that, is that, I guess that was what was necessary?
Right, uh, Commissioner, that's the specs they wanted. They started out with a, the V6, but they came back and said they require the V8 engine. So we revised the specs, uh, and that's, that's what they said they need.
You know, I know we always bring it up, Deborah, but, um, no local opportunities or, why, why these other areas of Texas?
So, uh, Judge, again, typically with, with all fleet, I would bid locally, and I compare against the byboard or a cooperative, because the cooperatives in some cases are not always the lowest. About 80% of the time they are, but sometime they're not. The reason why we're going to the cooperatives for this one, uh, the grant has the same timeline to have a purchase order issued, which is, uh, 30 June, just as the, uh, Stone Garden grant.
And there's no, Stat doesn't have any comment on this or anything?
So, these, these vehicles are basically, did they specify what they were gonna be used for? I mean, is it specifically...
I didn't, I didn't wanna speak, uh, publicly, year making model, again, these are for our undercover unit with Haida.
Can we, can we put this aside just for a minute so I can research something?
Do you mind postponing it for a week, or...
I, I think timing is a, is critical if we are going to move forward. So if you can give me just a second, I wanna pull up the, I wanna get grants, um, to get me the, uh, bulletin where these are, where the funding is coming from, to see what the details are this, of this are, and how it's being used.
We'll go to 17, and then we'll come back to...
That'd be great.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Item number 17, Grant Applications. Approve the submission of grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioners' Court for final acceptance and approval. Approve and authorize El Paso County Sheriff's Office to apply to the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Body Armor Safety Initiative from the Office of the Justice Programs, U.S. Department of Justice, in the amount of $15,000, with a county cash match of $15,000 from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2021.
Judge, uh, Court, uh, Ryan Urothe, Commander of the Patrol Bureau of Sheriff's Office. Uh, this is a one-for-one match, this is the, we've applied for this grant in the past, we, we accepted it last year. Uh, it, it'll pay 50% of new vests for our new recruits that come in, as well as, uh, replacements of expired vests as they come up for, for renewals. Right now, vests are renewed every, uh, we buy a new vest every five years for our patrol officers.
Move to approve?
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Item number 18. Approve and authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office to apply to the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program FY18 from the Office of the Justice Programs in the amount of $350,000 with no county match required for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Morning, Judge.
Good morning.
My name is Arthur Hernandez, I'm the program coordinator for the Sheriff's Office assigned to the downtown jail. And this is, we're requesting, uh, the Sheriff's Office is requesting, uh, to submit the annual application for SCAP funds. This is money that we receive from the federal government to alleviate some of the costs for incarcerating, uh, criminal state aliens.
We'll move to approve?
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number 19, Budget and Finance. Approve Amendment Number 31 to the County of El Paso's 2018 through 2019 operating budget. This budgetary amendment will not increase or decrease the County of El Paso's 2018 through 2019 overall operating budget of $442,754,227.72.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Budget amendment specifics were emailed to you last week. Were there any questions on this week's amendment?
Move to approve?
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Betsy, how are you doing on your...
I, I'm getting, I'm getting the obvious information being given to me immediately, but I'm trying to get additional details. Right now, it's, it's only allowed for undercover vehicle usage, is what I'm being told, but I'm looking to see if there's anything else that's allowed under the funding. But basically, it's, it's, uh, it, it's specific funding for this specific purpose. So I'm looking just to see if there's any other strings or ties or information that we can, um, share with the court.
Would you like to take a recess, Judge?
That would be appreciated, and I'd like to have a definitive answer.
Yeah, why don't we take a 15-minute, maybe, break?
Commissioners' Court will recess for 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.